Evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to tonight's monthly meeting, the Village Board. We're at November, the end of the year already. Thank you to those of us who are joining, joining online. Get right into it. They have a roll call, please.
Mary Colley. Trustee Bogey.
Yeah.
Trustee Fatty.
Yes.
Trustee Starbuck.
Yeah.
Trustee Wood.
A opportunity to request a vote to add or modify an agenda item. I have no requests. Announcements, tonight is, tomorrow is yard waste pickup, so yard waste out tonight. That's the announcement I have. Anyone else? We'll move right into reports from Village Apartments to begin. The Village, Village Accountant Michelle Escalolo is joining us online.
Hello.
Hi.
So, some quick highlights for the financials. The independent auditors were here. All their field work is done. We're just wrapping up a couple items. And they should be ready to present to the board the findings, which have no findings, but the results of the audit for the year ending May 31st, 2023, by the end of December. Just in items, but so far, and I don't anticipate any material findings. Everything went well with them. Currently, projects that I'm working on, you know, is the FEMA reimbursements. The village has to update their nicely reportings for the pension system by the end of the year. Some working with our payroll company and the state to do so. I talked to Matt Krug, and we're gonna try and have the last and the endpoint swap outs. The, there's a couple houses that just couldn't make the scheduling. And we're gonna send out an email and some letters and try and get that scheduled by the end of November. So I'm putting together a list for, for him. Been working with Eliza to get the parking meter kiosk and handheld devices up. So hopefully, we'll keep moving forward with that in the upcoming weeks. On Monday, I sent out garbage invoices for those who chose to have additional carding services with Royal. The invoices did go out late. The service period is from April to March of 2024. So if anybody wants to add on services, they can at any time. If anybody wants to have changes, they have the right to cancel the service. And if not, they'll come into Village Hall or mail a check for those additional services. And this will have to be an annual process. Included in. Yep.
Also, an opportunity for people to swap bins, if they want to swap bins. Sizes?
They can if they want to. There's a $25 fee per swap out. But they could just let us know about that.
Thank you.
Attached to the financial report for the record is just the year-to-date statements through October 31st. Next monthly meeting, I'll do a quarterly report, which will be six months then passed, and a six-month projection. As compared to last quarterly report two months ago, there's still not, you know, any material changes. We're just still working towards the occupancy tax and the parking meters. And then we just need to make sure that we cover the FEMA capital project costs. But that'll be year-long projects, and we have some money from the fund balance that we allocated for village-wide repairs. So we'll just keep track of it all as we go. The last item on the report would be budget resolutions. I'll have them, you know, in the next meeting or two. We have to make some year-end transfers, some mid-year transfers. For example, the sidewalk line on the financial reports is really overspent. But we knew that we were gonna do that. We just have to reallocate it from village-wide repairs. So it's not that the money wasn't allocated. We just need to reappropriate it between some of the department lines. Any questions?
How many outstanding endpoint installations are there? Do you have a sense?
Roughly, I think, 43 maybe. It's under 50.
Yes.
Is that me at?
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't sound like you're going to want it. Any questions from trustees? Moving on. Oh, no, we have a request from Michelle. Michelle hires winter help at the end of the year to help with closing out of years. She would like to request the rehiring of Krasiana Vodakovich for year-end work during the months of December and January. She's been with us for the last few years, helping with tax preparations. And water data, et cetera, that tax upgrade package. So she's very useful, Michelle. I would like to make a motion to hire her December and January.
So, Buckets?
Favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? You. Have a good night, Michelle.
Thank you.
Hey. I can switch glasses. I'm not working for me. Do we have Bugsy? I don't think so.
They don't see Bugsy up there.
Okay. So, Roadways and Facilities actually has a very long report. And all of the monthly reports are available on the website, so you can read through them in detail. We'll just hit highlights. So you're not spending your entire evening sitting and listening to reports, but they are there. Bugsy has been working diligently with Eliza and his team getting ready for resident parking permits. It's been a lot of digging and installing and shifting. I just want to ask folks to recognize that we do have a very small team on Roadways and Facilities. There are three full-time members and one part-time member. They're carrying a tremendous workload right now, getting ready for residential parking permits. And we know that there are some things that they're not getting to as quickly as folks would like. Please be patient, so that they can do the things that are their priorities, and they will come back. They're keeping track of the things that need addressing.
Yeah, and just to add to that, if I may. For instance, like, their team is putting poles in before the ground freezes. It must be done before it gets too cold. And instead of doing leaves, like collecting leaves from the streets.
But they will do that.
They will do that, but right now, the poles are the first priority to get the parking meters installed.
So thanks to them for their hard work. Water and wastewater. We have Superintendent Krug with us online.
Yep. Good evening. So, after a month of October, the reservoirs, if you notice, the levels are down a little bit. That's just basically because we are working with Tectonic doing the visual inspections. So they are down a little bit, but we are starting to regain in the upper as we drain down to lower. And then hopefully have that wrapped up by, before the holidays set in and the colder weather. So we could ride through the winter with a nice supply. Back to your lodges test, found in good standing. Our usage was down almost 2.7%. Like Michelle mentioned, we're gonna try to push the last of the CDMA endpoint replacements to get those wrapped up by the end of the year. Moving on to wastewater, had a lot more stuff going on there. The auger brush was received. We started working on that this week. Hopefully, we'll have that back up and running by the end of next week. Pembell Avenue Pump Station, we had the motor two, pump two failed, but we found the motor starter was faulty, so we replaced that on the 13th, got that back up in operations. Seasonal chlorine disinfection at the plant ended on the 15th. Market Street Pump Station, pump two tripped out on the 22nd. Trouble shot that and found out it was the phase monitor, which we replaced, had in stock. So that's also back up and running as the next day. And we had our annual inspection, this time with the DEC. That was taking place on the 25th. But other than that, everything else was pretty much business as usual.
Okay, that's a lot. The question for you, we
Yes.
Need to commit the ARBA funds set aside for the wastewater filters. We need to have a bid and have the bid accepted in order to commit the funds. What, where are you with that bidding process?
I just met with Will from Han on Friday last week to go over everything, so he should be finalizing everything and that, ready to go out.
And you've made him aware of the timeline, right?
I believe he is aware of the timeline, but I will double-check with him tomorrow morning, going back on site.
He's also balancing a lot right now with storm, storm.
Yep.
Storm reengineering. Just make sure he knows that, where he has to prioritize that.
Yep. Already. Alright, have a good evening.
Good to. For enforcement. No big shakes, although I noticed that numbers are rolling steadily along. Anything in particular that you'd like to report on Greg's behalf?
No, fees were up this month, or in October, primarily due to Butterfield and the buildouts in the little spaces, so.
How, do we have a sense of how close that is to being done and being occupied?
The units, the residential units, I believe, are done.
Oh.
CEOs have been issued great, so. And they start to build out on the two, yeah.
Thanks. Please, gentlemen. I'm sorry, George.
Good evening, everybody. For the month of October, we had 64 calls for service, which is about average. We've been averaging, just going, actually been ticking down a little bit, because we're coming towards the end of the summer. So for the entire year so far, we have 615 calls of service on the enforcement. We had seven moving violations. We had 116 parking summonses. A total of 123 for the month, giving us a total of 784 for the year. And just to kind of expand on that, we have, the last two weekends have been really, really hectic in the village. And I've gotten some complaints on it. There was a few cars towed over the past weekend due to people being parked in people's private driveways and people parked on by address. So that was taken care of this weekend on, on the, on two of the toes that we, we had, we had done this weekend. So as the fall has gone and the leaves are dropping, and it should be done. I think this is the last weekend. I know this is the last weekend for C Street. But I think everything will start calming down and get back to normal after probably this weekend, maybe one more. With all that being said, we had no arrests for the month. I would like to recognize one of the officers, Officer Matt Jackson. He responded to an AID call of a overdose of a person in the village. He actually acted very quickly, and he administered two hits of Narcan, brought the individual back, who was breathing very shallow. Once he hit him with the Narcan, he started to breathe a little bit more regularly. P-VAC then responded. They also had to use the Narcan. And that, that person had gone to the hospital and has recovered and home at this time. So I would like to recognize the excellent job that Officer Jackson did, saving a life in the village.
That's amazing. That's kind of magic. This, this officer has delivered a baby, her nearly delivered. Assisted with the delivery. He delivered a baby. He's dealt with some, some very stressful situations in the village, including helping folks who with problems with dementia, get back home safely. He's just, he's a real, he is a real hero.
He's done one or two years. I just happened to get all, all the heavy calls. So again, he did an excellent job, and I think I want to recognize him.
And I think it was, was it P-VAC or the hub that provided the training on Narcan, the recent training on Narcan?
You've gone through two different ones. We've gone through, back in the day, went through the hub, which was a couple of years ago. And P-VAC had, did it recently. And also, the North Highland Powerhouse Company did do it. I'm not sure. I don't think he was involved, some of our officers were. So they're getting enough, you know, we're getting tons of training now, which is great. And that's all, hopefully, expanded out to everybody, all residents of the village and business owners. We can set that up through the hub. If they want to come in, and we can do a training on that. Again, as I said, we just, purpose to be there, a lot of our calls are, a lot of AID calls in the village, besides the enforcement that we do do. So again, that, that was an excellent job I handled.
Thank you. And also, that reminds me that we need to follow up on the CPR training.
Also, with that, just give you a quick update on the CAD system. We also, two of the officers go to a four, a three-day, eight-hour training for the new CAD system that's gonna be rolled out in the month of December. And that's gonna help us with our calls. It's gonna help us with contact with the county. It, it's gonna, there's just too much to actually go over on what it's gonna help us with. Take the officers, you know, calls to the village. It's gonna give us backgrounds on the addresses we respond to. Say it's here, 83 Main Street. If we've come here for any type of mental illness in the past or anything like that, the officer will know where he's going to before he gets there. So he sees the history of the calls, so he knows before he walks, even walks in the door, whether it's, you know, an AID call, whether it's a mental illness call, whether it's anything to that. So the safety of, of the people that he's responding to and to the officers. So we're going through that, you know, little by little, get all the officers trained on that. And hopefully, once that gets rolled out, we'll, we'll, you know, be ready to go.
And do you have any update on the communications tower?
That is still, I have not got an update on that yet. I know it was still in limbo getting that one tower. I'm not exactly sure where it's at. I will contact Will Rossiter, who's a sergeant that's dealing with that, and I'll find out how to revolve on that.
The location for that next communications tower has been identified behind the highway garage at the town. So there will be one going forward. It's a much less obtrusive location. It's by the salt shed. And we are very eager for it to be up and going, so that our officers have solid radio communication on this side of the county. Thanks, Larry. Anything else or any questions, Larry?
That's it.
Okay. We have a fire chief here this evening. With the president, the acting president, she
Oh, I'm Vice President again.
Not to be invited, President. Any comments to add? I don't see a written report today.
I believe he is at the firefighter one class.
Oh, I missed it. I don't have it. I must have left it on my desk. Okay, say it again.
The chief is at, right now is up the firefighter one class with two of our members who are taking that class. So they're, they're at a live learn training.
A good cooperation, a mutual assist with North Highlands and, and Garrison. Two mountain rescues, that's, that's, we were pretty, pretty clear all summer. But two in the last month. Okay, thank you. And thanks for filling in, Madam Vice President. That's important. Summary, $6,900. So forward, now we shift to report, reports from our standing boards and committees. Do we have anyone with us from the historic district review board or online?
They could not submit a report, because they covered everything last month.
Okay, and they are also, they don't have a second this month. Oh, no, they, they just met yesterday. But they did approve the, they did give their recommendation for approval on the Eagle Scout project that we Okay. Madam Board, do you have anyone from Madam Board? Mentally, so they met once in October. Pretty workaday meeting, three minutes, no old business of correspondence. They are conferring with the ZDA on moving referrals in a timely manner, and they are looking at an application of 14 constitution. I also, we have recently received, for the first time in a while, an application that will probably require referrals to all three boards. An opportunity for them to be working together and help get an applicant through a complex application process, so. Do we have anyone from ZDA? Eric? Someone else like the, folks not just me talking, someone else like to give the ZDA report?
So they actually did meet twice last month, first in a while. It was, there was a public hearing on a fixed foot fence in the side yard, and then a workshop on a proposal for an addition located partly in the side yard. And they're also revising the BBA, what we've been basing it on.
Yes.
And we're giving that to us.
Thanks so much. Okay, tree advisory board, I think I saw this here. Come forward and
Hello. So just a few things we knew this month. We had held our regular meeting. There were 14 new trees planted in the village. Six of those were village-planted trees, and the other eight were in partnership with the Bossa Bell Tree Initiative. Meaning they funded those other planting, which is great, and we cooperated by helping plant them. I wanted to thank Matt Krug for marking the water lines and cooperating before we did this project, so that we didn't hit anything. And all the volunteers on the TAB, including Grace Kennedy, landscape design, and her guys who helped do all that work. So that's great. We've been working on every Tuesday backing out the metal tree tags that you see in the trees, because I don't know if you guys knew that, but they have to be in green. We thought it was gonna be a five-year deal, and this is year two. And some of the younger trees, they're growing faster, depending on the species, so we have to, like, back them out now. So we're adjusting our focus based on that. We're doing sort of an RFP for group winter pruning that got delayed last year, so it didn't occur last year. So we have, like, a huge lump of winter pruning that needs to happen. Also, I noticed in Michelle's report funds that were already spent on maintenance and pruning that I have no knowledge of. That must be Highway Department, yeah, so we, I need to figure that out before.
That may have been, that may have been removals that Bugsy had to do post-storm.
That's probably it, because it was bad storms. So anyway, we might only be able to do a small group of those people. So people in the village who've been waiting for that kind of pruning. If it's not emergency work, we do it in a group.
Lots.
As far as available. So if you're waiting for regular maintenance pruning, you might have to wait a little longer. People at the top of the list go first after hazard. And we are continuing listening to a tree removal application for the parcel that's on B Street and Mountain Avenue. That's a village-owned parcel, and some of the neighbors are applying to have some of the food groups in there. Here and there, of course. And we will be making recommendations to you after that. Then we had to expend a little bit of funds to have an arborist report on one of the trees, where there was a safety concern, just to see if there was a professional safety concern. And otherwise, that's it. I just talked to Laura about possible extra funds available for trees, so that would be nice, too.
Yes, oh.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll cover it in a later agenda either.
Yeah.
Yeah, so exciting. Could you just, two things. One, one thing I'll tell you about, and another question, just for clarity for the public. When someone has a public tree in front of their house or nearby, and they see that it needs trimming, what's the process that they go through?
So the process is, we have an application on the website under the tree door tab, where you can submit, just in writing, a request for pruning or significant or non-significant pruning. And if it's something that's small, or if you already, if you would like to fund that yourself, and you have a professional willing to do that, it's usually a quick process that goes through me, right? See what you want to do, and I talk to you about it. If it's more significant pruning, or if you want the village to pay for it, we have to, we evaluate that first as quickly as we can, and decide if it needs maintenance or not, and what your concerns are, and try to work that out. And then we put it on our list for group pruning, depending on priority. So if it's a dangerous condition, we deal with it right away, of course. If it's something that can wait, and is just an annoyance, or needs, sort of just the health, we put that on. And sometimes, we already have plans to prune it, so, but it just starts with a little paper application to the village.
We're thinking about public trees, of course, not trees that you can't get. And I wanted to, I keep forgetting to tell you this. Someone nailed a sign to the tree just out front, in front of the construction, with pretty hefty nails. The sign has obviously been taken down, but we wanted to have you pull the nails, since they were large. What?
Oh, have Charles pull the nail.
He's the one that did all the tree tag.
I was doing that for a few years.
Oh, no, no, this was a, this was a sign for a yard sale in August, or September. Very large nails, which is, by the way, not okay. The local ordinance can't attach things to the village trees. Thank you. Oracles. Appreciate it, Jen. Okay. Do we have Jeff from the Rec Commission? We just spent time with the Rec Commission last week in a workshop session, so just a quick update to share with you. We did have a proposal from a Boy Scout for an Eagle project, Eagle Scout project, to add chess tables at the waterfront park, so on either side of the dock and the grassy areas. And the Rec Commission has also put forward a proposal for a dog run at Mayor's Park, which is something that people have been asking for for a very, very long time. We have some insurance things to check into. But the board felt that the, the location was appropriate, and we're really excited about it. And lastly, fundraising for that, there will be fundraising for that project. And we are partnering with Friends of Phillips Town Recreation, who will, there are 501(c)(3) who can accept gifts designated for that project, and then help us fund that work. So all the dog lovers out there, get ready to write some checks. Okay. Updates from our municipal and government, government partners. Both of our, just folks who normally come in and report are in session tonight. The town board is in session, having their first, I think it's their first budget hearing tonight. A couple of things to pull up from their report. They appointed Nelsonville resident Lauren Bickiho to fill the vacant position on their Rec Commission. It's a really great appointment. I think she's got high school soccer player, and I think a middle school soccer player, too. So more holding connections across the departments is great. And the board, the village, sorry, excuse me, the town board accepted the resignation of Town Justice Steve Tillman, effective December 31st. He did not run again. And we offer our congratulations to the Town Justice-elect, Angela Thompson Tinsley. So we will have two females as, as Town Justice in Phillips Town. Legislative Montgomery is also in session. We weren't able to speak to each other today, so I don't have a report from her. They just finished their budgeting session. We'll hear from her next month. Okay. Reports from the mayor and Board of Trustees. Trustees, is this tonight? Which week? Next week. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold, this is the monthly meeting. This is Catherine's last monthly meeting. She did not run for reelection. And it's been just a pleasure to have you here.
It was a pleasure to serve with all of you.
It was. I, I think, so people know.
Honestly, you know, I, I served with two other boards, two other mayors in different combinations. And honestly, nobody gets anything done like she does.
You know, enjoy your Wednesday nights. Come to our room. A friendly face in the room, I love it. Thank you. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give a first bit, which is, we found out today that we got another nicer ductane energy grant of $10,000. So thanks to everybody who reported their heat pump installation. They got that award really quickly, so we'll talk about how to spend it. We still have a campaign that's about EVs, so if you purchased an EV for the last couple of months, let us know. Or, or still, we'll keep doing heat pumps. So if you install a heat pump at your home, or a hot water pump, let us know. Do you know when the chargers at Butterfield will be live?
I heard that they were live. You said already?
Oh, yeah. So I guess they're on. There are four chargers at Butterfield. They are, they're paid chargers. There's a reduced fee for the people who live at Butterfield, but they're all available to the public, which is four more spots in the village. It's great. Okay.
Just for me, parking, you know, great, that's pretty much all I'm doing, but this week will be sort of after this evening, I hope to be meeting with the Highway Department, who are our officer in charge, to come up with sort of implementation plans and make priorities and communication plans, and working with Trustee Bogey to get that done. So that'll be, that'll be coming up soon, but it's on my radar.
And Catherine will be, will be
starting next month by February, like, in front of us.
Welcome. We are very much looking forward to your help with communications strategy, making sure folks in the village know how how parking is going to go into work. So we're eager to have you. I'd have to tell a couple of very quick things. So we do have, we were able to add one additional area to the damage inventory for FEMA, 138, oh, 138 Main. The property there, there was a driveway collapse. A portion of it is on village property. It is the transference of Backbrook, where, where Backbrook comes across Main Street. And FEMA, FEMA agreed with us, and what's valuable about this is they captured not only the immediate area for current repair, but identified, I think it was 140 feet back off the street line, to look at for hazard mitigation, so the, the future planning. So we're in good stead on that spot. We're able to pull another piece of Backbrook into the, into the FEMA story. I just want to say a big thank you to all of our staff. Some of them are online, some are in the room with us tonight, who are managing the implementation of our recent legislative determinations. There are a lot of moving pieces in every single one of the projects that we're working on right now. And our staff is balancing all of them and providing high-quality and courteous service to the public. So we're grateful for all of you, and I think your community is as well. Okay, moving on to resolution adopting Chapter 126. Chapter one twenty six, uh, oh, I'm sorry, no. We have, first we have, um, I'm sorry, let's get the committee update. Uh, our, our ad hoc, our, our, um, village representatives to the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Data Committee. Um, have submitted a report, it is available on the website for public viewing, um, I think James, I thought I saw James in the room, oh yes. Um, she likes to come up and introduce herself and give us your report.
And I'm online.
Oh, and Henry, hi Henry.
Henry's.
Henry Feldman is joining us.
Uh, General Bay, and, uh, I'm sitting on the data committee that's, uh, liaising with. Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail. Personnel and all of the, um, vendors that they're hiring, uh, to do different analysis. I submitted a written report. Of, uh, the meetings we've had so far, there were some, there was some initial problem with, um. The dynamic, the understanding back and forth of, uh, just where the line was, and as far as the independence. Of the, uh, personnel on, on the data committee, uh, and, uh, the people from Hudson Highlands. That got resolved, it took a little while, uh, we, we got that, passed that, and then it was incorporated into the RFP. That, that, that separation would be there, when the consultant was hired, uh, we would, we would, um, have time. Uh, private time with the consultant to discuss things, so. We felt that we had our ducks in a row before we went, uh, and asked, asked questions or, uh. Had the vendors come at us, so that has now, uh, happened, well, uh. Ninety-nine percent, the, i- it appears as if, um. BFJ or BGF is going to, uh, be the consultant, they're a smaller firm. Uh, that was just this past week during, uh, business hours, I was not able to attend that Zoom meeting. But, uh, the other members. Uh, other village and town reps were very positive about, uh. The background that the principal had, he's going to, uh, oversee both the pedestrian and the traffic studies. A lot of background in, uh, in, uh, traffic engineering, so that will give us. Eyes on the, the numbers when they come through and the methodology that they're using and the modeling, uh, so. That's, uh, not, not yet. Totally approved, but it, it certainly appears that that's the, the consultant is, and we'll most likely be meeting with them. Next, uh, next meeting. Uh, which should be in, in about a week's time.
Jane, can I ask you? Clarification, what is the name of the firm again, BJ?
Uh, it's BFJ.
BJ, and they're.
You know, BFJ principal is, uh, George Jackerman, Jacaman.
And they are, that group is, is just consulting with you, right, not with you?
They would be the consultant.
Just for the committee.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
I had run down a couple of the meetings we had, uh. First one for where we met the, uh, pedestrian vendor, uh, or the. Uh, modeler for, uh, pedestrian traffic and crowd traffic orca. And, uh, the traffic studies, uh, vendor, uh, AK RF, who's also going to, um. I think be drafting the EIS. Uh, we were, we were given a presentation, uh, by both, both of those groups, um. There was a, a little bit of concern on my part of, uh, that the, um, the. EIS, the standard EIS, does not include a pedestrian study. Uh, but they're going to, uh, they're going to take what Orca gives them. Uh, it just seemed to be, uh, an, an afterthought that, that it's not, uh. Uh, what is usually included in an EIS.
Is that the, the, um, comment that you made in your report, that a quantified, quantified pedestrian impact is atypical?
Exactly.
So, so is qualitative typical, but not quantitative, or none at all?
Uh, like, well, no, I think none at all, but don't, I, I'd have to circle back and, and, uh, find out. But it appears as, right, that as if, um. Because that was, uh, drawn up as a red flag, that they are going to, uh, take, uh, and incorporate. Orca's, uh, data there. But I'll confirm that for you.
And the, and the data is, traffic is like pedestrian counts at those locations and.
Right, pedestrian counts, um, behavior, yeah, yeah, flat out, um, head, head counting. Uh, but behavior too, uh, where groups form, um. Uh, where, where, uh, there's, um, blockage on the sidewalks, what's causing the blockage? Uh, what can be done to alleviate it, uh, even, um, observations of, uh. When people fall into single file, when they're, when they're side by side, so, uh, that, that's Orca's, um. Baileywick, that's what, that's what they focus on, now, the only, the only little, the. Not a little issue, it's like from day one I've been, uh, asking, well, uh, there was a review given, um, that. Said, well, we've been capturing data since, uh, since Memorial Day on at least five occasions, so. Back in August, I said, well, that's great, can I have the data, uh, you know, um, and, uh. It was just kind of, well, well, we don't, we're not finished compiling it yet, uh, and, um, I even. Uh, after, after we had a field, uh, meeting, one of the meetings was a field meeting. Where we walked the village with the Orca people. And they, you know, they, uh, kind of taught us through what, you know, how they went about capturing data. Uh, and I followed up the next day with one of their people and said. That, that's great, thanks for that, can you send me the data, and he did respond, but just not give, I'm, I'm, I mean, I literally asked. Give me the spreadsheets, and it, uh, just doesn't happen, um, if I got, again, a very. Extensive, bullet pointed, uh, review of, of how they captured the data. But they're not ready to hand it over yet, I don't know why, uh, also since, um. I've been asking for the, the traffic numbers too, and who, you know, I. For months, you've seen electronic counters and also cameras at, uh. Uh, at the corner, uh, in two locations, right, uh, there's, there's been, uh, a camera. Uh, and I don't know, uh, when that data is going to be. Released, uh, but, you know, I'm, I'm just looking to get that, uh, to look it over, I know that they're compiling it and they're going to. Put it into a model or present it in a certain way, but, uh, so far, they haven't, uh. They haven't, uh, provided that.
Can I ask another question about that, is that part of the, um, arrangement with the, um. Consultant that you just mentioned, will they provide the raw data to the consultant that's working with your committee?
That's my understanding is what they, that they should do it, and we should be right there with them, and I want to see the consultant, um. Literally prove what they're doing, in other words, it might be too much to ask that they, uh. That they have the same exact modeling software and put it in, but, um. Summing up, what, what I would say is, I, I don't want to just take it at face value, I want them, I, I want. Our consultant to be able to recreate the numbers that they're handing us, uh. I don't, I don't think, I think that's the whole point of the committee, really, uh. So, um, on the, a, a really important meeting that we had was on the five, uh. Alternative routes through the village, trying to get to Little Stony Point. And, um, the first point I made to them is like, well, you know, you gotta, gotta realize that this is a very subjective thing, you, you can. Through your analysis, you can say, well, this, this is a preferred route, well, that's great, because people don't care, their preferred route is what's easiest for them. So, uh, you know, I, I tried to get that, uh, across to them of. How is it, how is it enforceable, so they said through signage and, and, um. And, uh, and advanced, uh, communication, they can. Get the higher percentage of people to take what becomes the preferred route. I, I'm skeptical about that, but, um. The five alternative routes, a, uh, engineering firm SLR, uh, they did. Currently, the preferred route is, would be sort of the. Um, water walkway from the, uh, from. Park, uh, dockside, on the west side of the tracks, to Little Stony, that would be the least intrusive, but also. Uh. Very expensive to build and, uh. My, my question with that was, well, why is that preferred, so SLR said, well, we had a matrix and the rep. Ran through the ten attributes of, of the matrix and, uh. Showed the score that each one re- uh, received, and why that was. Determined to be the current preferred route, it's not, it's not chosen yet, but, um. Same situation, I said, well, uh, I want to see, I want to see the reasoning behind. The numbers that you, you got to, um, you know, uh. What negative things, what positive things did you assign to each of those attributes that made you determine this? Out of these five, it got a score of fifty-six and this got forty-five and so on. I did the same thing, I followed up the next day with the engineer, and. I guess the word went out where it's like, no, you're not going to give anything directly, I got no response. Uh, and I've been asking for that for a while, uh, you know, I, I wanted to see, um. Uh, you know, what, I, again, the, the objective being not just to accept. Uh, the results as a data complete, how are you, how are you getting there?
Right.
And what, and what's, what's the reasoning behind it?
Which is, we asked you to do on our behalf.
Yes, yeah, so not to, I'll, I'll run through the positives, you probably already, this time, I mean, not to, um, I mean, these are all. Uh, really seasoned professionals in their disciplines. Uh, they're being conducted, uh, the studies by, uh, all these different firms and they, you know, they've got. Decades of experience, uh, for the most part, they, they are open to change and flex, uh, flexibility, uh, responsive to. Our comments. I saw a particular comment of mine incorporated, uh, into a, a slide deck. Uh, they're willing to, uh, walk through, uh, uh, the application of, uh. Data to the study tool, the model, uh, to, to, uh, decision outcomes. Some vendors, Orca, like we're saying, responded to direct follow-ups, so that's great. Um, uh, on the, on the concern side, responding accurately to the big picture. Uh, are the cumulative dynamics of multiple crowd and traffic behavior data sets and their overall interactive impact. Upon one another, being recognized and addressed, so that's something I'm trying to get them to do, it's like. Don't just collect this data in silos, because it's almost like a chain reaction, even. On a couple of occasions, I stood out there on, on weekends and just watched what was going on and. And crowds on sidewalks would drive. People who wanted to get around, around them into the street, and then they would jaywalk, and then that would impact traffic. Or people would get frustrated. Uh, waiting for people to cross and start pulling insane three-point turns on Main Street, but the, the larger point is that. All of these dynamics are, have a cumulative effect, so trying to get them to see that, uh. But, and, but they're listening, but there still seems to be, you know. Uh, a, a separation, uh, as far as letting us completely into their confidences. But there's still a long way to go, there's something like eight meetings left to go, and, uh, and I think, um. Our input is consistent and I know that. Some, some press fees and mayor also, uh, on them, so. I think the, I think we're, we're accomplishing what we set out to do.
Henry, do you want to add anything that, that James didn't cover?
Yeah, um, I mean, it's what I wrote in, uh, what's in the prepared, uh, remarks. Um, I, I mean, to me, it's, it's extremely simple, um. They have, uh, the fjord people have committed to the trail being, uh, ADA, uh, there's a special acronym. A G O D A for, uh, trails, uh, in, uh, public spaces, but it's basically ADA friendly. Uh, there's only one route that works for them, to be brutally honest, there's only one wa- route. From Cold Spring to Little Stony Point that works for the fjord people, and that's Dockside. Because they want a twelve-foot path, uh, that can be multi-purpose. Um, so, uh, fair, uh, would put people on pedestrians on the sidewalk. Put bicyclists in the street, uh, they don't like that, uh, they want a twelve-foot space. Uh, nine D doesn't work because, uh, one, they probably can't get. A twelve-foot, uh, multi-use path, plus, uh, the, the slope on the, the, on the hill. Exceeds the maximum for, uh, ADA, and which is something like five degrees. Uh, five percent, not five, five percent grade is, I think, the max for ADA, so the only path that works. For the fjord people is Dockside to Little Stony Point, and I'll be honest with you, to, to a large extent. Uh, these, these, uh, measures of, uh, uh, this matrix stuff of, you know, ten or twelve different things. And adding up all these different things doesn't really matter, um, the, uh, the only place they can get twelve feet. Is, like I says, Dockside, I asked them, uh, that if the, if we want, uh, if we don't want that and we want fair. Uh, would they like, uh, um, upgrade the sidewalks or do something like that to make them smooth? And they said no, uh, that they would probably add a sidewalk at the top, at the north end of Fair, and then they would. They would, uh, they would have the fjord trail start. At Little Stony Point and not at, uh, Cold Spring. So I, I mean, to a certain extent, I mean, I don't. I know I'm supposed to be on this committee for all the data and everything, but I, I. The engineer in me goes, why are we worrying about people on Main Street? Why are we worrying about where planters are and things like that, uh, when, when the reality is that there's only one path that works.
Say that again, you would not disagree?
I, I think they're gonna, you know, I, I think they're gonna push back pretty hard on, on that, they're gonna, they're gonna stand by their matrix. Now, I, I don't know what our argument against it is, uh, but.
See it first.
Yeah, let's see it, that, that would be a start.
Do you know what alternatives are, will be in the EIS for this section of Cold Spring to Little Stony Point, which ones are evaluating? Is it all five that are in?
They're evaluating all five, but I, I don't know that for the, when they, when you. Form of the actual EIS. That they're, they're going to still include the four that are not, not preferred. I think, I think when they get there, uh, you know, uh, that's like a final EIS, and then they're gonna say. This is, this is the route that we chose, unless they totally caved. And just say, we're gonna start at Little Stony Point, but what does that mean?
Well, the, the process of developing an EIS requires that you weigh alternatives, so, um, that's, that's not sort of not an option. The options, options do have to be weighed, um. I think it's reasonable for, for the board to support our data committee members and request, um, the matrix and, and a plan of process. Um, the matrix and and a plan of process. I know that they are talking about, um, upcoming. Public hearings on the question of routes, um, but I think that you should have and we should have the baseline information. That you need.
I think it will come, just like the other things I've asked for, it's come but not. It just seems strange to me because I know they have the slide deck, we just looked at it and all I'm asking you for is what we looked at last night, um. And I know that the matrix was made up. Six months ago, probably.
Great, they have conclusions, but they won't give you what fed those conclusions.
Things that were, um, of concern to me when I was reading, looking at the slides and looking at the minutes and your reports, um. Things that stuck out were discussion of, um. Narrowness of streets. Um, and sidewalks in village. Yes, they are narrow, um, but that's also part of village character, right? We are a small, we are a small village and. I wonder if you're getting a sense that they're, um. That Orca may, uh, recommend widening sidewalks within the village.
Well, that was a sensitive direct quote. Yeah, yeah, they are. They would, uh, like. In the lower village, um. I guess at, uh. Rincon.
Uh huh.
Right, they, uh, yeah, it just, uh. Was. You know, just in conversation, bandied about the the idea of, well, this would, uh, there's so much spill over into the street that. Uh. Either widening the sidewalk a little bit or. Closing the street on a weekend and making it like a pedestrian mall. Which is not as, uh. You know, irreversible.
No, no, it's not. Um.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure why these weren't, you know. Villages conversations, I I. I I I mean, I didn't quite understand why these were. Uh, fjord. Um, um, motivated, uh, studies, uh, I mean, the, you know, um. Yeah, I. It. It just felt a little weird. To be walking down Main Street with him pointing out where signs were impinging on, um. On, uh, on where it's, you know, like where the Foundry Cafe is, uh, has some tables out and then he pointed out. Do they have the menu out and then there's a bench there and it's like. Why are we having this conversation within a fjord context, I?
Well, I think it was, I think it was in the overall, um. You know, uh, pedestrian traffic because they were Orca people and they were trying to point out what causes. Blockages on sidewalk, uh, on the sidewalks, uh, and, um. Uh, as far as, as far as. The suggestion of maybe widening sidewalks where they. Where they narrow, I guess that was, that's just, um, you know, modeller theory talk. Of what's going to alleviate the problem, so they were. Throwing.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I, yeah, I get, I totally get that this was what they were hired to do. But, um, I again, I, you know, I'm just going. Why are, why, why isn't? Why isn't the mayor and the trustee walking this with with the Orca people since this is village sidewalks, uh, um? I I guess I just have this sort of, you know, suspicious streak in me.
So so was there any discussion in those, um, walkabouts? Of how those recommendations would be. Put before the village and, um, village self-determination and things that they're discussing?
Not not that I recall, uh, there was some discussion about, uh, what they. What they, the the buzzword is wayfinding, uh, you know, basically signage and they pointed out some of the. Sort of, you know, poor signage, uh, uh, unfortunately, they're on, they're, they turn out to be MTA signs. Uh, you know, so it's like, you know, there's some U-turn things that like, huh? You know, so, um, but again, there are MTA signs. And and you know, and and that's totally fine, I I, so there was a lot of wayfinding conversation, the. The the stuff about sort of, you know, and again. I totally get it from the Orca people's standpoint because this is what they do and they were told to come in and look at it. So, you know, the idea of kicking around ideas is is what they do. But, you know, it was like, um, I don't know what you call this, I guess it's lower Main Street. Yeah, yeah, down to the gazebo. Yeah, you know, about turning that into like a one-lane street with like parking on only one side and. So people could walk on it, uh, you know, it could spill off of the sidewalk onto it. Um, you know, and and there was conversation about, you know, the, uh, uh, you know, the the slowness through the tunnel. In which I thought was sort of hilarious in that when we were walking back. There was like a, like a three or four-year-old kid who who was in front of us and we all just had to go at his speed. And, you know, and it was fine. I I, you know, to me, it's it's part of why I'm in the village. So, um, but, you know, again, it's, you know, if you got a thousand hikers, this is, you know, you. You you want to have little kid lane, I guess. I don't know. I I again, I just. I know I'm rambling at this point, but I it. I I just am deeply. Wondering why, why this is being run through the fjord people. Just.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the question a little differently, just to to see if we can tease this out a little bit. Was there any discussion either among Orca representatives or fjord tribe representatives? About the fact that these are village streets we're talking about?
Sure.
Uh huh, and and how?
Yeah, like I said, to to me, it struck me as more as like, more of just the hypothetical exercise, this this would work, this would alleviate. Or the problem, you you know, of, uh. Not upper Main Street, but as you're coming towards the depots, all of a sudden. You have a very wide sidewalk that becomes half the width, so that's gonna cause congestion.
And was it received from? Is it being received from the HFT folks with the understanding? That 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 there that there are streets that we need to.
Oh, I I I can't get inside her head, but I it certainly didn't strike me as if, oh. You know, good, we'll we'll start, you know, pouring concrete tomorrow. It it just seemed to be. You know, an exercise. This is what works. This is, this is what would improve it, just like.
Right, but but somebody is writing a check for this and, uh, so they're they're doing it for some. Particular reason. But there was like no conversation about the Orca gentleman showing up at at this meeting, for example. And and, you know, talking to the the mayor and the trustees, uh, about, uh, ideas. Uh, I I didn't get that sense at all. The, uh, that the fjord people are the consumers of this information. And and I would assume, yeah, it will find its way, uh, into this setting here. But I I didn't get the impression that that part of the, uh, scheme was that. Uh, Orca, uh, representatives would make a presentation, uh, to the sport, to the trustees. No, I didn't get.
That's a question for us to follow up with and ask is how is this information being brought to the municipality and how is it being brought to the public? It's very useful to have insights. Did trustees, other trustees have questions?
Um, I mean, I I think it sounds a little bit like that walk was them trying to formulate suggestions, which is kind of similar to the way. We got suggestions on the parking plan, which we already had in motion. And that's not really what we're looking for from your trail. What we're looking for from them is partnership in terms of if you're putting. A path in a certain way. A, we want to be able to put input in, obviously, and review the data, which is what you guys are doing for us. Thank you. Um, but also, we're gonna need, if if they're gonna recommend that we, you know. Expand sidewalks and change things, like, we're gonna need. Partnership and funding for things like that because this village doesn't have it right now.
And then public conversation and.
Well, and, yeah, I guess I would have concern if they're baking into their. Plan and their analysis, any of these changes that are our decision to make, because we may not agree with that choice.
That's right.
It may be that we want our sidewalks the way that they are and or that we have a. Law against doing whatever it is that they're proposing to do and so. Yeah, so so that would be a real concern of mine and.
I haven't, I I haven't seen any structural plan that impacts existing village. Infrastructure. You know, it's it's just like, uh. Everything on the trail or the bridge or, uh. All the way up to Beacon.
But sort of not thinking.
Shoreline, but I haven't, yeah, I haven't seen any drawings that say, oh, well, we're planning to actually expand the sidewalk here, do do something.
So we'll see what you learn as the alternative pathways conversation continues.
Yeah. I mean, I think once we see those, like, their modeling of traffic. That will also help us kind of understand where they're going with it a little bit better.
Right.
Hopefully.
I'll throw out one final cynical thought in which is that it is all in service of promoting the Dockside route.
I mean, that's the concern, I think.
Yeah, that that pointing out, you know. The narrowness of sidewalks is, you know, by, uh, you know, especially. Uh, what east of the train, um, just makes, uh, having people be. Uh, west of the train, uh, that much of a better idea.
So, uh, being framed out as an ev- and an inevitable conclusion.
Yes, and and one of the other members of the committee, you know, made that comment in regards to committing to this Agoda, uh. Uh, thing that once they did that, then, you know, it. It basically forced everything else to fit.
Did they link that, can I just, that, did they link that? Any kind of funding requirement? Did they explain where it's coming from or is it just a preference?
Design preference.
They they actually didn't seem to feel that the Dockside route was any more expensive than any others.
I I guess I mean the Agoda, the state of Wyomun, is it because there's federal funding that required?
No, uh, they did say that it was not an actual requirement, but it is, um. It is the, it is what they want, uh, that they want. A trail that is maximally, uh, accessible. Um, and I think I put, um. Their, uh, link to their webpage that talks about accessibility, uh, in in the, in the, the report.
Thank you.
You know, they described it as being the equivalent of the ADA for, you know, outdoor construction. But again, the final thing I would say is, uh, that is why you want. The, um. Now behind the matrix, so you can challenge it. If you, you know, if you choose it. But you've got to get it first and then don't come across with it. I just, I don't know why they delayed, but they have a schedule, it seems like.
Thank you so much. Henry, thank you for joining us from what I think is vacation.
Yeah, yeah, and and which actually is interesting because I'm in, I'm in Gettysburg, which is, you know, a a another place that has. Uh, a rather significant, uh, tourist draw, so it's, uh.
Photos of things that make sense and work well in Gettysburg, bring them home to us.
Okay, well, maybe not running a US highway through, uh, the downtown, uh, roundabout, uh, that maybe. That may be a good one.
Have a good one.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Just for clarity of the public record, there is not a proposal for a number of village on the table at this time. Okay, so speaking of traffic, um. Let's shift to, um, the resolutions adopting, um, local law six. Twenty twenty-three, amending chapter one twenty-six. There are, Eliza, we have, there are a couple of items that are, um.
Amendments.
That are amendments that will need to be, the most thing will need to be made, um, to approve with amendments. Do you want to walk through them?
Sure, so there were, um, two amendments that, uh, our clerk brought up, uh, regarding. Um, the use of parking at the American Legion parking lot. Um, we had made a contract just to, for the season, to fill in extra, um, seasonal off-street parking while our mayor's park. Parking area is under construction. Um, so that's not an official amendment that we've. You know, approved with the American Legion parking for.
Forever, not to be codified.
Right, so, um, we're gonna take that out, that'll be an amendment, um, to chapter one twenty-six. To remove that bit and then the second amendment would be removing the ADA parking spot that we were going to add to State Route three oh one. Um, and that's just because we have to get approval from the state DOT before we, um, add that to the code. Um, so we will have to, uh, put that off until we've had a chance to do that.
Well, yeah, so they first, so can pursue the plans.
So, um, with that said, uh, i- unless there's questions, I would like to make a resolution with those amendments.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Um, like, make resolution number thirty-six. Twenty twenty-three, adopting local law number six of twenty twenty-three, amending chapter one twenty-six, vehicle and traffic. Following resolution was offered by myself for adoption and seconded by.
Second.
Catherine. Uh, to wit, whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has caused to be prepared. A draft of the local law to amend chapter one twenty-six, the vehicle and traffic. Of the village code and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees held a duly noticed. Public hearing on the local, on the draft local law on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the Village. Full of Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA. As it applies to the adoption of the draft local law. Now therefore be it resolved that local law number six of twenty twenty-three is hereby adopted by the village clerk. Oh, and the village clerk is authorized. And directed to take all of the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption. Procedure, including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State.
Trustee Bozey.
Hi.
Trustee Patty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Mayor Foley.
With gratitude to trustee Starbuck, a hearty I.
Trustee Woods is absent, officially adopted on this date by a vote of four. Zero, zero with one, next time, John.
You, the big one.
Um, Catherine. You, you worked, have been working on parking since two thousand and eight? Um, I think we should have the honor of making a motion. No amendments, Eliza?
No, it's all yours.
Offering resolution thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three, adopting local law number seven. Of twenty twenty-three, amending chapter one twenty-seven, residential parking program. Following resolution was offered by myself for adoption and seconded by, or the server. To wit, whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has caused to be prepared a draft. Of the local law to amend chapter one twenty-seven, residential parking program of the village code. And whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees held a duly noticed public hearing on the draft local law on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA. As it applies to the adoption of the local law, draft local law. Now therefore be it resolved that local law number seven of twenty twenty-three is hereby adopted. And the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption. Procedure, including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State.
Trustee Bozey.
Hi.
Trustee Patty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Trustee Woods is absent, officially adopted on this date by a vote of four, zero, zero with one.
Okay, so for the public, um, these are now adopted by us, now comes the implementation planning. So this doesn't mean tomorrow morning resident parking permits are are ready to go. We have to now build the system out. So we'll be communicating with you about how to complete the program, um, and what you need to know about. The specific changes in the, in the vehicle and traffic code that will apply to you in your daily life, but we're hoping that. Um, this legislation. Is a step toward making quality of life better, particularly on intense weekends. Okay. Thank you very much. For business, trusty Bozey, the session of my sort of grant funds.
Great, all right, so, um, so now we have three grants, um, two ten-thousand-dollar grants, one five-thousand-dollar grant through the. I started clean energy communities, and so what I'd like to do is talk through my, um, suggestions for how we spend it, um, get your feedback and then. We can vote next week, um, who the grants are due November seventeenth, we could get an extension. But if it's possible to get it all done, I think that would be ideal. Um, so we've been talking for a while about, um, EV chargers in the village. Um, and, uh, my proposal is that we have the funding to do four chargers, so two, two port, two. Um, and, uh, my proposal is that we have the funding to do four chargers. So two, two port, two kind of stations, four ports. Um, we got quotes from a number of companies and then looked at different locations. Seems like the two leading locations, um, are, uh, Main Street by Saint Mary's Lawn, um, for the municipal parking lot. Um, my, I'll, I'll tell you my preference and why, um, but would like feedback and, um, like to hear from residents too. Um, I prefer the Main Street. I think one thing is that it sends a really great message when you come into the village that we have EV chargers and that that's the one that we support and makes them really obvious where they're available. Um, I think, uh, because there it's free, there's no, um, parking charge during the week, you know, Monday through Thursday. It makes it more, um, more easily used by residents. And I think that this is something that we want to make available for residents. Um, uh, and it's, you know, it's convenient, but it's not in like, quite in like the busiest part of Main Street. Um, and it's fully on village properties. So the logistics work. Um, it also has the, the right power source to be able to have, um, a higher speed charge.
Drawing, drawing from the poles.
Drawing from the poles. Um, so that's my preference. The municipal lot also works for, um, for four chargers, but, um, uh, we have a payment, you know, there you pay for your time. So people would have to pay double. Um, uh, which I think would be a disincentive for residents. So, so that's my preference on location. I think we have the funding to be able to have a little bit faster charger than some of the other locations around. So I think that could be both a draw for getting people to use it. Um, and like as an EV driver, I get really annoyed when it's really slow. So it won't be level three, but it will be a faster level two. Um, and I think that is worth, um, putting a little bit of extra funding towards. Um, and, uh, and then I think we should get a company that has a good track record, that has a maintenance plan so that it's not on our small town to, you know, be, you know, our, our kind of village staff to be dealing with it. And so, and I think that we should pay it upfront as part of the grant. But it's not an operating cost. So those are my, and, and I think it should be something again, that is designed so that both residents and, um, visitors can use. So, um, that has led me to the, a recommendation of this one, um, company Livingston that's New York based. Um, uh, that kind of meets all of those criteria.
And would they, um, would be like a credit card payment?
Yeah. So, um, unfortunately it's kind of, it's like this, we're a bit of a wild west time now of all these companies. They have their own app. So it's a pain that you have to, um, have another app. Um, but, uh, but I, I used it. It's easy to use, use your credit card. And then we, and then we set the price. We can set one price for residents and one price for visitors. Um, and then we just get the revenue. Um, well, I would work with Michelle to make sure that that's smooth. Um, but they handle all of the processes. They also handle all of the submissions. We're getting a lot of, um, uh, public funding for this. Um, and, and they would handle all of those submissions, um, and the compliance of, um, kind of submitting the data.
Is there a fee for their service or how does that work?
Uh, there is a service, there's a subscription fee, but again, we would pay all of this for five years. Um, now with the grant.
And we, and we can pay prepay on the subscription.
Yes, that's right.
No, sure. Um, do they all have to go in the same place?
Uh, it's, uh, they don't have to, um, but there's a, there's like an economy of scale of doing it, doing it once. Um, there's usually, there, there's like an upgrade that needs to happen for the job then. Um, so it's beneficial if we're going to do it.
Would they all be on the same side of the street? So they'd all be along like long side of the south.
Yeah.
Side from the corner.
Yeah, four, yeah, four in a row with retractor cables to manage the, the wire. So, um, and I will say again, like I, I have the quotes, I will share them and we can take a, we can take a vote on it. But it would be helpful to have at least a sense of like, this is what we want to submit for the grant. And then when we, when we get the okay, then we would review the contract and sign the contract. Um, and if there were some reason that we determined a different location after the grant were received, would we be able to, would there be flexibility in the grant for us to, to choose a different location? Yes. Okay. That's important. Yeah. Um, uh, the, the thing that's, that's held us back at the municipal lot, um, is the, the lack of electricity. The, the poles that are in the municipal lot are maxed. Um, and it's a, it's a very expensive prospect to bring in an additional pole there. So that's why we've, we were going to mayor's park and then the storm happened and the mayor's park, parking lot collapsed. So here we are, looking at fewer options and, and trying to optimize for multiple factors.
Yeah, maybe someday we'll be able to put some down there. But in the meantime, we can.
I would support the, the location that you're proposing. I think that makes the most sense for logistics and just convenience for the, sort of in the middle of everything.
I, I will say, I, I, I think the location is great, particularly for, um, the, the optics of a village that embraces, um, EV chargers. I do have some concerns about the, um, the aesthetic impact. I think we could have it down, we could have it, well, I think we should. We should look and also like with, uh, I have photos, I can share them. Um, uh, and we could ask the company to really specifically show us and we could see how far down we can get to the kind of southern. And we could identify where we would want it, not southern, whatever it is, western. For, for downhill, downhill. They're not very spatial. Um, uh, yeah. So we could identify that. Okay. And if, if anyone, well, we're obviously, we're not making a decision tonight. So if folks in the room tonight have thoughts on this, it'd be great to hear from you during the public comment period. And that, so that is the large majority of the funding. Um, it would be about twenty thousand of the funding with all of the subscriptions. And then the remainder of it, um, we have flexibility with one of the grants to do things that are kind of qualitatively clean energy benefits. And so my other proposal, um, I, I guess two pieces. One is that, um, we've heard a lot from residents that they want to have a food scraps recycling drop off location. That's not lane gate. So they go, people can walk through it or have it closer to the home. Um, and Phillips Townes offered to expand their contract so that we would, um, pay two hundred dollars um, a month to have a drop off location in Cold Spring, um, as, as kind of part of their program. Uh, it makes it really affordable. That's a lot less than if we did it independently with a food scraps hauler. Um, and so my, my suggestion is that we do this as a pilot. Um, say we do it for nine months, that's eighteen hundred dollars. That would be part of this grant. Um, and, uh, maybe start it in the spring, which would give us time to find a good location, um, figure out the signage, um, work out the kinks with Phillips Town, kind of go through whatever process we need, but we would have the funding set aside. Um, is that? Great. Um, and what we helped, what I helped fund day is we were at a point where there's also, they pick up houses. And I have to say, there's a lot of, I think there's also interest from Main Street businesses of having, um, pickup. And so having the hauler come through and then they could add on to the contract. That, that is reasonable also. And then the last one is that we would still have a, a few thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars, something like that, that we could put forward on, uh, street trees, um, uh, as Jones were mentioned. So, um, uh, and you know, that might be the amount that would be the, the flexible one depending on, you know, what the final contract would be for the, the chargers, um, but the, so that the remainder, about twenty-five hundred would go toward the purchase of more, um, trees in the village.
And I think you wouldn't say no to that, right?
And again, these are, um, there's no deadline for these, uh, kind of qualitative ones. There's no deadline to spend it. Okay. So.
Fantastic.
So did that all sound good? So great. So I'll put it, um, together and then we can, um, make a quick vote on it next week and I'll send it.
Great.
And, and happy to hear feedback from, from Bill to follow up with me.
Okay. The last item is, uh, one of the follow-on pieces that we need to.
You don't have the version that was, you have Friday's version.
Oh, sorry. Oh, snow removal at firehouse. That's important. Um, someone who has that, who has it in front of them.
First is the village hall conditions. Village hall conditions assessment.
That's what I was going to be asked. That's where I was going. Let's go back to that. Okay. So the next piece is pursuant to, um, the grant that was secured for the village by, um, our former assembly member Sandy Gallup for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to do a conditions assessment, um, and some repairs here in Village Hall. Um, we have to go through a, a financial approvals process before the grant is finalized. So this piece, um, is professional services. We did, we asked, um, Highlands Architecture, um, to put forward a proposal for, um, basically walking through the building, uh, helping us identify issues and prioritize. Um, and then plan phasing, because this is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't going to do the things that need to happen in this building. There are a lot of issues in this building. Um, so making sure that we have an approach that we can manage over time. So in front of us tonight is, um, Jason's proposal and the proposal that goes with. I'm sorry, Justin. I do it every time to have Justin's proposal and the, um, proposal from the engineer, um, he had, we think, we will need a structural assessment for like the giant air conditioner that's on this room, et cetera. It's as big as Volkswagen if you ever have a chance to see it. Um, okay. So, um, with someone, um, let's make a proposal or first any discussion.
It's a really long list of issues, I'll say. I mean, there are a lot of issues in the building. That's why, that's why we needed the money from the, from our assembly member.
Um,
Motion to approve the quote to conduct the village hall conditions assessment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed? And now back. This is the renewal of the plowing contract for the firehouse. Um, important that the trucks are able to get out, obviously, when, when they need to get out. Um, and with a small team on our roadways crew, it's helpful to have um, a contract for the firehouse that we know that's clear, um, when, when the trucks can do all. I'm making a motion. Um, so I'm making a motion to approve the quote from Mark Slansky being an outdoor living uh, for snow removal at Firehouse. Second. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now we're coming to the plan everyone's been waiting for.
Oh, wait, ten bucks.
What?
Well, I guess I did have the Friday. I do have the Friday. Right. Sorry.
All right. Talk us through ten bucks.
Ten flex is the actual, actuarial service that we use for the fireman service award for the administration of the low sap program. So it's an annual EB pay, pay with pay them to administer the program. There are limited options. This is a very specialized service. So we've had ten flex, I think, since day one.
Uh, so, so what you need is a request or an approval for me to sign?
Yep.
Someone would like to make that motion?
Make the motion to approve, uh, the mayor's signature for the contract of ten bucks.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we are verily and truly at the end of board business. So, um, okay. So we're at eight twenty-five. Um, we've been going for an hour and a half. I would like to, um, make the motion that we limit public comment to items that were on the agenda this evening and we'll take public comment for 10 minutes.
Not acceptable.
I'm sorry?
Not acceptable. We the people, that is not acceptable. We are here to give comment on relevant things to this village. If you're going to live in this, you have, you have shut our Facebooks down. You have limited the public from.
Favor?
Howard.
Look at the coward.